In a way that management wanted to document biodiversity of their three fifty acres of campus. Started this whole process. First, we published a book, Found of Symbiosis International University, where they got to know that there are more than two hundred species, including birds. Majority birds we could, you know, identify when documented in that book, more than one twenty. And otherwise reptiles and mammals and insects and, you know, mostly reptiles and mammals. Again, we could document and insects only butterflies. And that whole process got into a conservation and education awareness process also. Because students who stay on campus, more than two thousand five hundred students stay on campus. That is main university campus and there are many other campuses in Pune as well as Noida, Bangalore, Hyderabad, Nagpur. And we felt that those who were staying on campus, they, of course, they should and must know about the biodiversity around. Where they are staying for two years, three years or five years. Because we knew that they know nothing about biodiversity and they are still not connected with the, you know, environment. And their connection is only, you know, nice weather and, I know, rainy season and the romance. Which follows to that, but about biodiversity and that conservation and biodiversity documentation. So those things we are slowly pushing, I know, into them. But I can see that there is a change and so it's a new initiative, just two thousand eighteen. This biodiversity cell has been established, but I think slowly students, they are understanding the importance. And though they are PGA and UGA students, so adult students and they know what's happening, you know, in the world and globe. About climate change and all other things, but to understand more about biodiversity and the things which are changing. And need a concern, observation to protect that area. It should start where they are leaving, where they are studying. So that's how biodiversity cell, you know, putting all its efforts to bring that change in students from where they are taking education. So that's it. So that's the biodiversity cell is doing and our, the Sunday special sessions has come as a surprise due to COVID nineteen scenario. And we could talk to many other people and you and other experts because of this. So I welcome some of you to our biodiversity cell session. And these students, as I earlier also mentioned, they are PGA and UGA from various programs. Management and culinary arts, engineering, design, media, then geoinformatics, computers. So there are almost more than twenty twenty-five programs. They are studying even law and liberal arts. So today there will be representatives of, from all the institutes joining us or must have joined us today. And the camp, this session is open for all others also. So those who want to join from outside also can join. So with this, I give it to Karan and very much good morning once again to all. And welcome somewhere to biodiversity sensation program. Karan, all to you now.
Thank you, Shilpa Man. The era of science has given us many good things and out of all good things, the one great thing that which I believe is photographs. Photographs have become the universal language of everyone that speaks to our heart because every photograph has a story. And every story is different, which has the ability to convey emotions, narratives and ideas. A very good morning to everyone. I welcome you all to this meeting of biodiversity cell of symbiosis international university. Well, today we are going to witness many such stories through photographs by a professional nature, wildlife and conservation photographer, trainer and speaker. He is a behavioral and conservation photography enthusiast. He believes that knowledge and awareness is a key to conserve our nature heritage. Devoting most of his time to the observation, study and documentation of nature. He loves to share knowledge through his writings and workshops. Through his works, he especially contribute towards the conservation of last, past vanishing wonders of the world. A TEDx speaker and a masterclass mentor with DCP expeditions. His work has been awarded and published at various national and international platforms, including Sanctuary Asia, National Geographic, Incredible India, Nature in Focus, Your Story, BBC, The Times, UK and the list goes on. Without further ado, I now welcome Soma Bretta Maulik. Over to you, sir.
Thank you so much, Karan. Quite a mouthful of an introduction. Thank you so much again. So jumping right into the session. Today, this session is about telling stories through photographs. And one of the, one of the, you know, things when you, when you talk about stories and photographs. One of the quotes that instantly come to your mind is that a picture is worth a thousand words. Now, is every picture worth a thousand words? That's the question. So is, is my everyday selfie worth a thousand words? I don't think so. Because if I, if I show me, show you my selfie, it, it wouldn't mean much to you because it'll, it'll just be another stranger showing you a picture. So the importance of a picture is decided based on the connection that a picture is able to make with its audiences. For us humans, we connect with pictures at a deep psychological level. Instead of just seeing a visual on screen or in print, a picture makes us think about a lot of things. And such images are the ones which, you know, typically make connection with the audiences. Okay, so moving on to the next slide, I have included a picture of a eastern mountain gorilla taken, I think, back in two thousand sixteen seventeen. On the mountain tops of, between the Penitent National Park, this was taken in Uganda. And where a gorilla was just holding a twig like this in his hand. But I, I found a striking similarity between the hand of the gorilla and between our own hands, you know. You can, you can see the fingerprints, you can see the fingernail and the way he was holding the twig. It looked like as if the gorilla is holding the twig like a pen. So instantly when my, my viewers are going to see this picture, this is a very, very familiar scene, you know, to them. Everybody, everybody at some point of their, you know, some point in their life have, have used the pen. I'm not very sure about the modern generations because most of the things are now moving to the keyboards. But we did in our, in our times that we, you know, used a lot of, a lot of pen and ink and stuff. So automatically this becomes as if the gorilla is getting ready to write something. And it creates a connect between the image and the person. Back in the days of print, I mean, I say back in the days of print because most of the, most of the work, photographic work now has moved to the digital platforms. Okay, so back in the day of the print, we used to say that if a viewer is, you know, if, if a viewer stays at your picture for three seconds. That means when a person is flipping through the pages of a magazine and he stays at your picture for three seconds, that is going to register with that person. The image is going to stay with that person for three days, three months, three years and for the rest of his life. If that person is, you know, you are able to grab his attention for three seconds. Now, the competition is, has become more fierce. Digital media, we are bombarded with millions and millions of images every day. And it is now even more important to make, you know, different images that, that will grab the attention of the, of our viewers. And will enable us to tell the stories that we want to tell through our pictures. Okay, so we'll be going through some examples during the session that how these pictures, you know, enabled me to tell these stories. And I believe through these examples, I'll be able to, you know, explain that how, how, you know, you can, you can also tell your stories through your pictures. So the next picture is of two lionesses. This is right after a failed attempt at hunting zebras in the Masai Mara. So Masai Mara, as you all might, might be knowing that it is known for the great migration of the wildebeest. Okay, and there are a lot of predators in that place. You have a lot of big cats. You have, you have a lot of lions, a lot of cheetahs, you have leopards. So typically the most, most seen cat over there is the lion. So we had this, we had this idea in mind that, you know, we want to, we want to make a picture of a lion which, which is, you know, a little different from the average image of a lion directly looking at you or yawning or something like that. We wanted to, you know, bring in a, a little bit of a human touch. So how to do that? How this happened is again, I mean, in nature, you can only plan and plan and try. It is not always possible for you to, you know, get the image that you, that you plan for. And I'll be coming to it in a bit that, you know, how much time it normally takes to make up, make a picture which is, which is like really impactful. So out of all the pictures of lions that I made during that trip, so it was like a ten day, ten eleven day trip, doing safaris, you know, the whole day. From morning, morning six o'clock to evening seven o'clock, thirteen hours infield, shooting all the time. Okay, and this was my most favorite picture from that trip. We, we usually, we usually go there, we visit different, different locations and lions are usually a common denominator amongst all, all, all of these locations. But still, this was the moment which, you know, struck with me. Which, and, and when I came back, I, I automatically knew that out of the whole, the whole set of pictures that I had shot during that trip. This image is going to stand out. The reason for it is very human like. When a mother, mother cares is a child about, or, or when, when a mother, you know, shows affection to the child. You should see that, I mean, you can, you can see that kind of happiness on the face of the child, you know. And I could see that in these lionesses. Although this was, this is not, not a very, you know, positive story from the lions, lions side. Normally lions approximately have a hunting rate of, hunting success rate of around twenty-five percent because they hunt in prides. The tigers that we have in India, they have got a hunting rate of five percent or lower. So if twenty attempts they make, they are able to kill only once. So there are actually smaller cats, okay, so they were trying to, you know, kill a zebra that evening. And all of a sudden the moment, I mean, they, they planned, they, they put up the trap and everything, they, they stalked the zebra. One of, a few of the lionesses moved really close to the zebra. The herd which was grazing here, but the sunset, such animals, you see all these prey animals, they, they start to move towards higher grounds. Now, why they move to the higher grounds? Because from there the view is open. So they're able to see from, they're, they're able to see all side and usually all the prey animal, they have got poor vision during nighttime. Okay, it gives an advantage to the predator, but, but again, the herds normally have their safety numbers. And they are able to perceive a threat from a distance if they are at a high point. Okay, so the moment, the moment zebra started moving, it was a failed attempt automatically. We already knew that, okay, this is going to happen, that it, it is going to fail because they are very careful and calculating in their manners to, you know, when they hunt. Okay, so once they have put up a trap and anything in that area goes wrong, they'll usually abandon it. Because conservation of, if an animal gets hurt or if it tires itself too much, there is a risk of starving in the wild. That risk always looms, looms over the head of a predator. Okay, we, we as photographers or audiences, we give a lot of importance to our, our predators. But actually, if you, I mean, if you, if you see at the grass, if you see at the food level, their life is, is a day to day struggle. Okay, and with the kind of pressures, climate, climate change, all these pressures we are putting it, their days are becoming even more struggling than it used to be. Okay, so this was the kind of an image that, you know, I, I preconceived before, before going there. Because I've been seeing lions for a lot of time, for, for, for a very long time. So then the, the usual stuff, you know, you start, start getting that out of the way that, you know, I, I get the face of a lion or a lioness. I get them in good light, I get, I, I, I get them sleeping, most of the times that big cats sleep, almost twenty-two hours a day. Almost all the big cats are sleeping for around twenty to twenty to twenty-two hours a day. So you have to be patient and you have to sit down there and wait. Okay. Okay, I can, I can just go about the, go on and on about this image, but let's, let's move to the next one and, yeah. So but is it enough to just take pictures or do we need to make them? So there is, there is this subtle difference between taking a picture and making a picture. So a lot of time when I, when I, you know, interact with people, they, they, they tell me that, okay, you were there and you just took the picture. It's, it's never like that. You were there, you were attempting to take the picture for how many days, you don't know it. Okay, so typically what happens is when we pre-conceive a picture in our mind, that, okay, I go with the, I go with the fixed mindset. So there are two schools of thought on this. Okay, photographers, there are photographers who, who believe that, okay, let's be very organic. And we go there, whatever we get, we take it and we come back. Okay, I on the other hand belong to the other school of thought. Okay, what I do is I pre-conceive my shots in my mind. I sometimes will also sit down and draw what I want to get out of. And I'm not a very good, very good, you know, I'm not very good at drawing or painting. So what I do is I, I make a line sketch of the whole thing. That, okay, this is where my horizon is going to be, this is how my animal should be in the frame. Okay, I have mountains, I have trees, I have this, I have that and all this, all this, once it comes together, I will have the picture that I want to take. So that is how I make my images, okay, instead of just going there and taking it. So pre-planning your shots always, you know, help you with, with the, with the whole creative process. Because when these things happen in the wild, they ha, had they happened for a fraction of a second. So it, it's not that one, one methodology is better than the other or, or anything. I, I just feel that when you are going there and you are not ready for the action or, or whatever is going to happen in front of you. You tend to miss it nine on ten times. But when you have pre-conceived, conceived the shot and you have designed in your mind that, okay, this is how my image should be looking. Okay, you are instantly able to pick out that moment and react to it. So that is why I always advocate making a picture instead of taking it. I hope, I hope I've been able to, you know, put this thought across to all of you. Now, I'll just take a few examples of the same thing. Okay, so this is a from our, our very own third desert. Now, a nice picture, a normal picture that we usually see on Instagram where the animal is, animal nice and clear separated from the background. I can see the beautiful oranges on the face and nice fur texture and everything. Okay, this is good. Okay. You've seen this animal in your life earlier or not, but this doesn't convey a firm idea about the species, where does it live? Why is this guy called a desert fox? Why not a common fox or why, why not, why not something else? Okay, why a desert fox? So as a photographer, my idea would be to convey this clear message to my audiences that why this species is called this. But I mean, what kind of an habitat is, is, is used by this species to, to live and to, you know, do its day of day to day activity? Okay, so the next picture is from the same trip. Okay, and it is probably the same individual, it could be a different individual, it's very difficult to, you know, differentiate between individuals when it comes to foxes. You see a lot of them during a particular time of the year and it's difficult to make out whether it is the same individual or not. But the next image, the fox is right amidst the dunes. Okay, so now the name desert fox, my audiences are instantly able to connect with the image that, okay, this guy lives in a desert. Okay, the clear dunes and everything, we had to try very hard to get this, get this image. Typically, you will not see desert foxes roaming around in, in open dunes like this during daytime. The reason being they are threatened by these birds of prey. So eagles hunt down foxes. Okay, I, I, I'm not included an image in, in this particular presentation, but I have an image where eagle is actually feeding on a fox. Okay, on a fox carcass and, and it was, it was a fresh kill that we got, got the other morning. Okay, so we kept trying, we, we used to get these footprints all over these dunes. And we kept trying and trying and trying to get these foxes. Late evening is when the foxes typically, we understood that during daytime, they will not venture out in the dunes like this. So we have to try either very early in the morning or very late in the evening. So every day post afternoon, we used to go to these dunes and wait for the foxes and other animals to show. Okay, so now again, this one shot took, it was, I think, eight, nine day trip. And this particular shot took us around six evenings to actually, you know, materialize. The reason being, again, not the other shot which I showed you, the fox and, you know, coming close, it is, it is actually very elementary. You, you just drive around and you find the fox. You just need to know a trip, a small trick that, you know, how to, how to basically outfit a fox and automatically you'll, you'll be able to do it and it's, it's no big deal. But getting a fox like this amidst the dunes where there's no vegetation, no cover, no nothing, it's very difficult during daytime. Because they usually don't venture out. Okay, so we had to, we had to keep trying, keep trying again and again and again. And eventually we got it amongst the dunes. So the own, the basic idea I had in my mind was that I'll get the, get the fox in bear dunes. Okay, from that one small idea that I want to make a picture which typically, you know, manifests the name of the fox itself. So the idea of a desert fox is manifested by this one image. I'm able to clearly convey to my audiences that this fox is a resident of the deserts. And bear dunes are, are, you know, they are self-explanatory, it, it doesn't, I mean, dunes means desert typically for us. There are actually two kinds of desert, you have the hot desert and the cold desert and dunes are typically a, a feature of the hot desert. Cold deserts also have dunes, but not like how you have, have in the hot deserts. Okay. So typically when you see a fox amidst the dunes like this, it automatically becomes a desert fox. So that is how a basic idea can be, you know, developed into getting an image out of, of, out of an animal like this. Now, moving on to the next slide. So this is again, the desert fox itself. Now, moving on with the stories with the images. Now, I have shown the desert fox and habitat. Okay, now I have to tell something, some, some of the characters of the desert fox. Okay, and how, how the desert fox lives in these, amongst these deserted areas. So we, you know, put our cameras at the base of a tree. Now, again, telling stories and again going, going, reaching those stories is sometimes very difficult. For example, to make this shot, the most difficult part was to actually find a bear tree which had so much fruiting that foxes will regularly visit the tree. And it took us almost two years to figure out that where we can find a tree like this. Okay, so every season we would, we would start searching at various locations where we find desert foxes. I knew about this behavior, a friend of mine told me about, told me about this and I'd observed this before also as, as a child I'd observed this, this foxes and your jackals and, and all these cannibals. They typically go for this bear fruit during winters. Good sugar source, animals are typically very fond of sugar. So automatically it's a, now nice sweet sad berry, it gives them a lot of energy, so they'll typically go after it. But then to make a shot which is impacting enough, okay. So we had to find a tree which was visited by a lot of foxes to maximize our chances of getting, getting the image. Okay, so the process, this is the whole process you, you normally follow. Okay, so I had this basic idea in mind that I want to convey that, okay, the foxes eat bear fruit. Okay, the foxes depend on bear fruit during the winter months. Okay, now it is, as I said, it is not a very rare phenomenon, but to, you know, as a photographer to present it to your audiences in a very interesting way is, is, is the job, is, is my job. Okay, so what I did is we started scouting for this tree that which, which had a lot of bear growing. And after almost two seasons, we stumbled upon one boy who was riding a bicycle through, through nowhere actually. If you go to Jaisalmer and some parts, the, the moment you, you are, you know, around fifty kilometers from the Jaisalmer town, you end up in an area where there is nothing. Barren lands all around, you'll just see a few shrubs here and there, some dunes, something like that. It's a proper desert. Okay, so you just roam around over there and we as city dwellers, if we are left on, on our own over there, we'll not be able to find our way back. Okay, but the locals, they have their, their markers and everything and once in a while you'll find one guy walking out of nowhere. One guy riding a bicycle out of nowhere, something like that. So one fine morning, we, we were just going around and we found this boy riding his bicycle and I, I stopped him. The moment I first stopped him, he started running away because these villagers are, they don't trust us outsiders, okay. So we, we had to catch up with him and then we, we, I, I started talking to him and he could understand me. So I said that we want, we want this, you know, we want this fox. So fox in the local dialect over there is called a, a locat or a locri. So we told him that we want a locri and we want them eating, eating bear. So he said that, I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about the fox, but I can tell you a bear tree. It is so big and there, there is so much fruit growing that people from six villages go and eat from that one tree. So I said, okay, great. So I went there, I was, I was not imagining that the tree would be so huge. It was like how you see your normal people or banana tree, a bear tree as big as that. Okay, so it was, it was that big, it is, it is, that tree still exists and it is one of my favorite locations in Jaisalmer, you know, to visit every winter. To find newer perspectives of the same thing. Okay. So we went there and actually we waited for one full day to observe that, you know, how many foxes come here. So in a day, we observed that there are eight foxes coming to this one tree. There are two Indian foxes and six desert foxes. Then started the process of, you know, deciding upon the light, the angle, the kind of lighting we want to use, how to outfit a fox. As they say, a sly as a fox, once you start shooting the foxes, you'll automatically know, even with, with the, the big telephoto lenses we normally use. It's difficult to get close to a fox. But again, this image had to be done with a wide angle lens. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if most of you are, you know, familiar with these terms called a wide angle lens. Or I mean, now in the days of the mobile phones, we know that wide angle lens, lens will capture a lot of area in a image. So but it does a lot of funny things with your perspectives. Normally a wide angle lens will bulge out the subjects which are almost in the center of the frame and it'll, it'll stretch around, around the edge of the frame. Okay, so anything which appears in the center will appear automatically a little bigger. Okay, it will, and wide angle lenses have, have a lot of distortion, so they push the background, background back. Okay, so in the background you can see these dunes and you can see this, this Karen K G D trees. I'm, I'm hiding among. Pardon? Okay, I think it was nothing. So the fox, the foxes started coming in and we kept our cameras over there. And as time passed, they became used to our cameras. So much so that they started marking around the cameras and we were, at one point of time, we were a little, little skeptical that it, you know, it might damage our cameras that if, if the fox goes and marks on top of my camera. Okay, so we used the single flash to light up, not the fox, but the fox is basically, you know, the light which is reflected off the ground is also, you know, it, it hits the body and reflects back. And that, that particular light is picked up, picked up by the camera sensor. The flash was used typically to light up the bear on ground because I wanted to highlight the bear also. Because that is one of the essential part of this whole story, that a fox in winter eating bear. Okay, now one behavioral aspect of the animal captured once in, in one single image. Okay, plus it has a lot of habitat element. You have these clear desert skies, normally in deserts in, in, in winter months. I mean, after, after the month of January, normally you'll find the skies to be very clear like this. In evening time, sometimes there might be a little bit of a cloud and you'll find colors and this that. But normally the skies are clear during the afternoon like this. Okay. And in the background, you can see a lot of local vegetation and you can also see some small dunes. Okay, now by, by the virtue of a wide angle lens, the fox actually dominates the whole scenario. And, and these small bears also look really big because they are close to the camera. So the choice of the lens, the choice of the camera, how you're going to do it is going to decide upon how the final story comes out. Okay, doing this with a telephoto shot, I would have been able to, you know, get the fox eating the bear, but my audiences would not know even on, now, most of the pictures are now washed on mobile screens. Okay, eighty, eighty percent of the, of, of image consumers are right now on mobile screens. So when you're, when you're looking at an image on a mobile screen, you'll see the fox chewing, chewing onto something, but you'll never know what it is chewing on. So then it becomes technically more important for us to have a particular choice of, so as to decide upon what kind of, what kind of a perspective I want from the image. Okay, yeah, so wildlife photography has been around for more than a century. And it is totally up to us photographers, where we want to take it from here. Why I say this is because the first picture that they say that, you know, of a wildlife picture was taken in back in eighteen seventy-six. National Geographic for the first time was published in nineteen six. Okay, so wildlife photography has been, I mean, National Geographic published the first pictures in nineteen six. Okay, and two of the board members of National Geographic resigned that year, they're saying that. And two of the board members of National Geographic resigned that year, they're saying that National Geographic is becoming a photo book. Now images are the main language that National Geographic as a magazine speaks through. Okay, and images have become a very, very strong platform for many of the people in the world to express their thoughts. Okay, now why I say that wildlife photography has been around for more than a century and it it is upon us to, you know, how how we take it ahead. Uh there is a there is a trap that we fall into as photographers initially. We get too much into the beauty of an animal. Okay, now because photography has been around for so long, believe me, any whatever pictures you are you're making, normally you are making, you get a tiger, you got to get a tiger walking towards you, you get a tiger sitting at a waterhole, it has already been done. That has been consumed by the consumer. So many of you would be management students, you you understand that or 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 otherwise also, you read up a lot because you're students, so uh you know that that for a for a nice startup, you need to have a very strong and unique idea, right? Or you started started to become successful. If the thing is already what others are doing, it is it is automatically it gets lost in the crowd. Okay, so if you have to stand out, if you have to grow the field, you know, the body of work of all the wildlife photographers put together in the world. Okay, if you want to grow that body of work, you need to think of something which is very unique. It has to be, you know, something which has never been seen, a story which has never been told in the way you are telling it. Okay, so that is why I say it is up to us photographers to take it from here. Okay, our our traditional photographers, our predecessors have done a very, very good job, I respect them all very, very much and we learn from them all the time. But as a photographer living in twenty twenty-one, it is my responsibility that I, you know, make my images in 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 a slightly different manner from what has been done before. Otherwise, the growth won't happen. Okay. Now, one of the primary things that you, you know, you you want to work upon whereby you are telling a story is the choice of the subject and the way you want to present it. Okay, the the way we want to present it, I've already covered a little bit of it in the in the fox thing that, you know, how how I decide upon presenting the fox with the bear uh in a wide angle and not and not in a telephoto scenario. Uh it's not choice of subject, choice of subject normally when whenever we start photography, it is very easy to, again, as I was saying, it is it is kind of a you know, sweet trap kind of a thing. That when you start photography, the first thing that attracts you is 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 pretty big. It it will either be a tiger or an elephant or a rhino or something like that. But but believe me, the stories of tigers have been told time and again. The stories of elephants have been doing per per told time and again. All these animals have been covered and recovered in so many times that it is usually very difficult to find the foothold for a newcomer. As many of you would be, you know, wanting to take up, take this this particular craft as a hobby or you want to uh make your name for yourself in this in this particular field. So that's why I say that your choice of subject has to be very, very important. Choose subject with nobody is nobody is working on. Okay, choose subjects and present them in ways that that, you know, the the subject hasn't been seen in this this particular. So now taking some examples and going ahead with the topic. So one of my favorite subjects from the Thar Desert, it is called a toad-headed agama. Okay, it's a small dune-dwelling lizard. Uh they don't grow more than eleven centimeters in length. Uh working, I'm I'm working on this particular, this one species for close to six, seven years now. Okay, every year I go there in the months where I can when I can find this species, I will spend a considerable amount of time observing and photographing this one species. This stays on top of dunes where the vegetation is less than two percent. Now, why am I telling telling you this? That when you are going to visit a a a desert, a desert park, uh remember that the camel rides you take and the gypsy jeep safaris you take on top of what you what you call the dune bash, you know, what what is there in Dubai. A lot of things are now percolating down to India also because people are slowly realizing that, okay, we have dunes similar to what what we would be getting Dubai. Why spend so much, go to Jaisalmer, you find find the dunes like that. But these animals are heavily affected by tourism activities, actually over tourism, not not really tourism, but it's like one when one dune is exploited for a very, very long period of time, they cease to exist on top of the dunes. On top of that, there is an afforestation program which has been encouraged in that area. So people have been encouraged to plant trees in a desert. Now this dune dweller only stays on top of dunes which have less than two percent of vegetation, so you plant a tree, it is actually harmful for a species. You need to know that, you know, what what you are doing in what context. It could be, it could be useful when you plant a tree in a city, but in a desert, if you go and plant a tree, it might be actually harmful to the ecosystem. Okay, now excuse me, coming back back to the photography part of this. I wanted to, you know, describe or depict this lizard as a as a strong character. Okay, strong character, why? Because it's not easy to stay on top of dunes. In in summer months, if you go to places like Jaisalmer, Bikaner, Barnmere or these, the the whole desert national park area, uh you will see that the afternoon temperature ranges between fifty and fifty-five degrees Celsius. Okay, and at that temperature levels, this guy is very, very comfortably living on top of dunes. You'll see them there basking and they're very active. Okay, when it becomes very, very hot during at at around between between two and three, three thirty in the afternoon, that is when they will they will look for a little bit of shade or something like that, but normally after nine o'clock in the morning, the temperature usually is like forty-seven, forty-eight or more or more normally, okay. So these people are able to sustain that kind of a that kind of a harsh, harsh temperature and dunes look beautiful from a distance. You go and sit on top of a dune and a a very light breeze of say two, three kilometers an hour, if it starts to blow in fifteen, twenty minutes, believe me, you'll get up and start walking. The reason being that that sand, it's things like, you know, miniature bullets. Okay, it's loose sand, but but again, it's it's a hard particle, it hits you. Okay, if you're sitting like that and, okay. So this this guy is adapted very, very aptly to live on top of dunes, it has a very thick skin. It has these these eyelids, these these really, really protruding eyelids which which it will close when there is a a strong wind blowing and the particles are, you know, getting into the eyes and hitting it. It is able to flatten the body and, you know, disappear in sand, it will wiggle and disappear in sand too. You know, that is that is one hunting and, you know, a strategy of this particular lizard. But instead of prey animal, I wanted to make this lizard as a protagonist of my story. So this guy is actually in this image braving the life on top of a dune. Okay, so you can see the flying sand particles, you can see that, okay, this is a, this is a dune, this is a bear dune, you don't see see any vegetation in front of behind this behind this subject. And these guys have beautiful color patches on the on the on the on the shoulders, you know, so that is that is one one more highlight. And by the way, this, the reason is still not known. It is not known to science why these these individuals sport these colors, you know, and when do they sport it during a year. The locals, if you go and talk to the locals, they'll tell you that they call it a gurgit. So gurgit is any lizard which can change its color. Okay, so if you talk to the locals, they'll say that sometimes of the year they are colorless, but during a particular time of the year, they'll they'll assume these colors, but science has yet to find out why this particular, you know, coloration happens in these lizards, whether it is a, it is a, you know, way of kind of a mating adaptation that that many 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 birds in their breeding breeding season, they'll assume this breeding plumage, which is very beautiful, okay. They'll they'll become very colorful to who the females. It is it is basically a a a a sign of their their, you know, strong, strong genetics, okay. The more colorful, the more dominant and stronger bird is, a female is supposed to, you know, favor favor that 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 male bird's gene. Okay, but it is not known to science why these guys have these color patches. Uh it is virtually, I mean, it is not documented at all, I mean, their life was documented by by Mister Sharma in nineteen seventy-eight by Mister Ishan Agarwal in two thousand one-two. Uh there are only two research papers on this particular species and that too, it is not a dedicated research, you know, research paper, it is basically getting the species as a part of the rest of the ecosystem and, you know, how other dune dwellers are also staying over there. So a lot has to be studied about the species and as wildlife photographers nowadays, you know, in in the current current era, it is very, very important to document these species which are not known in the popular culture. If I show a tiger to a person, everybody is going to know that it is a tiger. But actually, nobody is talking about a toad-eared agama, but it is equally important. Okay, as it's now, you know, reading up so much, being exposed to so much knowledge on the internet and books through books and our teachers also encourage us us and nowadays a lot. Now I see my, I I see my family members, their their kids and everybody, they uh they usually go to go to school and they come back and they ask a lot of questions related to nature. Okay, so it is actually a good, good thing for a photographer to bring to forefront these species which are not really talked about. So decide upon the subject that you want to shoot and then how you're going to present it. Another, now coming to the presentation part. So this is an image of demossile cranes on demossile crane, some of you might be knowing that these are winter visitors to India. Every winter they'll be coming to India. Now the good part of their story is these cranes come down to India, they are literally hosted by a community of people. The Vishnois feed them every day. There's a there's a there's a there's a vegetarian, very, very religious community from the state of Rajasthan, they are called Vishnois, okay. Now Vishnois are, they're 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 very, very religious and one of the religious principles that they follow is basically, you know, like all all religions pray the same that, you know, you have compassion for the follow-beep. So they take it to the, take it to a different level, level. Now, these cranes, when they come, they are coming to close to between thirty-five and forty different locations, there are three to four thousand cranes, cranes coming to each of the locations and more, okay. More than four thousand at some locations, much, much more than four thousand. All these locations, these Vishnois are feeding these cranes every single morning with this high-quality grain that they feed these cranes, okay. And every winter they are going to host these cranes over there. So interesting part of the story that this is, this is a very nice story that how humans are also not only destroying the habitats, they are also, you know, facilitating the migration of these cranes. Probably this is the, this is the motivation for the cranes to come to India. Otherwise, they would have taken some 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 different, different route altogether. But they all come to India and they they they, these are their wintering grounds typically, so wintering grounds are somewhere, you know, some areas where these birds and animals from, typically birds, from very, very cold regions, they come down to this this part because we are relatively warmer to where they originally lived. Okay, and they 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 basically, you know, stay back the whole winter and then they then they leave for leave on the migration route further ahead. So now the idea behind this particular image and the story that I want to depict is, I wanted to see the cranes from the eyes of a fellow crane. Okay, so now you have to think, while you're making your images, you have to think before, like I was I was saying, that pre-visualization will help you a lot. So we spent almost five days with these cranes, just one subject every day. Early morning, five o'clock, we'll reach here, it'll be bitter cold because they always come in winter and this is Jodhpur outskirts, that region is actually pretty cold. So very early in the morning we'll go and we started experimenting with various perspectives. First we put the camera on the ground, the cranes would come close, the cranes will look from the, you know, which is called a bug eye perspective. Okay, how how it will look from the eyes of a bug crawling on the ground. Okay, after doing all that, I realized that that all of that has been done. So this idea struck me that why not, you know, depict the cranes from a perspective of a fellow crane? How would it look if I were to be a part of, I were to be the part of a flock of of cranes like this and I were to fly along with them? So what we did is, we wanted to put the camera above the ground, I mean, a little above the ground, at least like three to five feet above the ground. Okay, now how to do that? There are literally, you know, ladders are not available, a tripod, if you poop, if you put it like that and you put a camera on top of it, it's going to spook the cranes. Again, a wide-angle lens, so the cranes have to be very close to the camera to get you this perspective. Okay, but then, you know, it's 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 basically a practical problem that how how you're supposed to keep the camera at a at a at a raised height and not let the cranes look at the cameras over there. So we used one of these trees that that you see in the background and we hung our camera up on a tree like that. Okay, and by early afternoon, these cranes start to leave back. After they have fed, they'll they'll go to the nearest water body to drink and the rest for the rest of the day, okay. So what we did is we hung our camera up on a tree and we used, again, used the wide-angle lens, the light was favorable, so we did not have to use any external lighting in this. And after trying, trying for a couple of days, we eventually got the shot on the, I think, on the last day of the trip, we got the shot where the cranes are actually, you know, they they took off right in front of the camera. So it looks like as if I'm flying alongside the cranes. Okay, so typically, when you are telling the stories, the stories have to be engaging enough. You can actually, you know, supplement the stories with words, it actually helps you get published. If you're writing your own stories, any editor is going to prefer, prefer you over, you know, a team of a writer and a and a photographer. The reason being, there are two resources being utilized and there is one resource being utilized. You you being management students, a lot of you being being management students, you know how resource utilization happens in the in the in the corporate and uh this field also, you know, publishing and journalism and all this, it's it's no different, so uh there is, there will always be this this thing. So if you have this, you know, mix of good writing skills as well as, you know, image making, it is going to make you stand out from the rest of the crowd much easier. So look for interesting perspectives, plan well ahead and, you know, try to be, try to be as 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 friendly to animals as possible. Here the cranes did not even know about the camera, that there's a camera hiding in the tree, they didn't they didn't see it because this particular tree is has has a very dense vegetation and we hid the camera really nice and we put put some vegetation on top of it and everything. And while they are flying, there's so much of noise that they make, the click, it just disappears. So they don't get to hear the camera or know the camera is over there, so they're comfortably flying. You can see some caps, some some cranes, they're right below the camera. That is where they look like this, the cranes on the on the bottom. They're right below the camera and they don't know that this this thing is happening and the fact line, valid to the camera. Plan ahead, think of new perspectives that you can make, learn from your peers, okay. Whosoever has worked with the cranes, if you do not have the knowledge of the subject, message them. We now, most of the people are pretty accessible, you can you can drop them a mail, drop them a line on Instagram, something like that, okay. Uh most of, most of the people that I know, you know, almost all of them are are very helpful, they're going to tell you that, okay. This is how I made this image and this is the location, you can go there or you can actually accompany them. Uh you know, people who who shoot these images or who make images like this, they keep going to the same location again and again and again. Okay, so you can ask them and 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 they'll tell you and learn from their work. Study really well about, you know, what has been done before you are going to shoot that particular subject. And then consciously avoid repeating the same shot. Keep your work absolutely unique. That is how you're going to stand out. Now, a very common animal, but a very unique way of presentation that I have actually, you know, photographed this animal handled with a fish eye lens. Now, those of you know what a fish eye lens is, fish eye lens is typically, it will warp the perspective like this, it will make everything round, look look roundish. Uh so the rhino looks like as if it is smiling. A rhino which is normally thought to be an animal which is very, very fierce and has a bad temper. That animal looking at the camera and smiling, so presenting the subject that we know of or no animal is actually a mindless brute that it will come and just ram into you. No, I mean, once they are threatened, they behave like that. And believe me, even a a normal small deer is way more powerful than an eight-foot, eight-foot man. Okay. So I tried to depict this rhino portrait, a kind of imagery that I normally avoid, but uh this this image, you know, got me to highlight the lighter side of a rhino. Typically, why I say lighter is basically I'm still alive and telling the story. Okay, the rhino did not harm me and it allowed me to sit alongside for an hour, close to an hour and and make images like this at I was barely a feet away when I made this image and live to tell the tale. So typically, rhinos are not always intempered, they have a nice nature, nature too, like other animals, but it's just that the experiences that people have, they 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 like to tell stories in that regard and I wanted to make, you know, break that stereotype and hence this image. Uh the next image, this is a lion-tailed macaque. Now, this is a high canopy dwelling species, okay. The fact that I'm able to take this picture or make this picture is because their home is now, it it doesn't exist anymore. Okay, their home in this particular area doesn't exist anymore, the the areas, this is taken from Walpari. So if you go to Walpari in Tamil Nadu, you'll 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 get to see a lot of lion-tailed macaques at the ground level. But originally, these are actually high canopy dwellers. And they will, they will almost never come down to the ground level to, you know, uh you know, forage or something, their their whole life is spent on teat- treatos. But now because their home is lost, you will typically see them foraging for food in these tea tea plantations. So from the background, you can actually make out that this is a man-made plantation. A normal forest is never like this, right? So this is a man-made plantation, this is, this was actually a coffee plantation and a part of it at the background that you see and you see a lion-tailed macaque, so. Uh so stories uh that will carry carry value if you are able to, you know, highlight these issues also. Because we are not in that era where a pretty picture is everything, okay. So we have to move on to subjects which are not covered by many people, uh we have to move move on to subjects or even if the subject is covered. You have to present it in a in a in a more unique way or the audiences to actually grab their attention. A cover image of a magazine or an article, it is always there to grab your attention, you will not start reading until unless your attention is grabbed. Okay, so your image has to be engaging enough that a person's attention is grabbed and he he sits down over there and starts reading what you have to tell about the subject, okay. The importance of a back of background in a picture, so background actually sets up the stage for a particular story. The subject is there and you have a nice background, so but the background, how, what kind of a background you you, you know, intend to keep in your picture is is going to. Give more power to your your story, okay. Now this is a spiny tail lizard from uh again, this is Rashipang Jaisalmer, one of my favorite areas, you can actually make out from body of work that I'm showing you. That I like that place a lot, okay, and I like to uh you know, tell up, tell that, tell about that place a lot because um. You know, that place is really, really amazing and very, very few few people go there, very few people have actually documented the wildlife over there, but it's really charismatic. So in picture you see a portrait of a hardwiki spiny tail lizard, okay. Why it is called a spiny tail lizard, you can see little bit, little spines on the tail, okay. And these lizards typically are are desert dwellers, okay. And here I have now, a lot of people are uh instantly thrown off. Uh when you see a lizard or a snake or a frog or something like that, we have this inherent uh you know. I wouldn't say fear, but we usually do not like these subjects, but they are wildlife, they are part of your ecosystem, their ecosystems and they play very, very important parts. So typically, when you are depicting a depicting a subject like this, you try to keep the background, you know. Really nice and interesting, so beautiful, beautiful skies in the background, you have one single plant and you can see 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 some formations. Uh you know, the dune formations in the background, okay. So uh choose, choose a nice background, you know, to go go with your story. Or if you want to depict your subject in a nice manner, even subjects which are, you know, which people feel are eeky. Uh you want to represent that subject at a photo photo photographic level, you choose a nice background, it will make the subject, you know. The background background will complement the nature of the subject and it will be a good image a as a whole. Now uh there's a Milky Way, it's a it's a simple, on top of a dune, there is a hedgehog, it's eating a scorpion. And we have the Milky Way core aligned almost vertically right behind the hedgehog, so this image took me almost three years to, you know. It took almost three years to materialize this image, because every time I'll go out in the field, I'll find a hedgehog, I'll find, I'll not find the Milky Way aligned in a vertical manner. I'll find the Milky Way, you know, on a horizontal level, now the story I want to tell here is, hedgehogs are typically active at night. And you know how these areas where, you know, uh there is, there is less human habitation and everything, you can still see nice clear skies and. And and this is the kind of habitat they dwell in, you have the typical uh vegetation of the desert, you have nice dunes and you have, there is a hedgehog. Uh in in front, not a not a very easy to, easy shot to pull off, it is a single exposure, yeah, another point is very, be very true to your craft. If you are uh you know, doing something funny with your images, you're merging merging two images, merging three images. Replacing the sky or editing something out or putting something in, you declare, I never say don't do it. For artistic purposes, you have all the all the all the freedom in the world, because photography is after, after all a a a an art form, okay. And art has no foundations, but declare to your audiences, because a lot of people come back to us and say that, okay, this is, this is good, this is Photoshop. I I like that because I don't add or remove elements from my image, if people come and tell me that this is Photoshop, I'm very happy that day. You know, okay, yeah, good, I mean, I was able to achieve my goal, something like this, so you got to tell the story of these subjects which are. Uh uh subject, another eeky subject, snakes, okay, so this is a green rat snake. I'm yet to come across another image of a wide angle image of a uh green rat snake, this is from Arunachal Pradesh, so. Beautiful, beautiful skies, uh you have a nice piece of, this is basically a broken tree in between where we found the snake. And you can see the rolling hills in the background and everything, so uh decide upon the perspective, how you're going to, you know. And and it looks like as if the snake is actually coming down from a mountain, kind of, kind of a mythical dragon that we, that we, you know, read about. Uh in in especially or or we see in Chinese and all these movies, you know, where you have this dragon and all that, so. Typically, Arunachal, all those, all those areas, they are associated with that kind of a culture, so a snake from there, you know. Uh tells you, tells you how those, how those areas are and how the mythical dragon is actually pretty real in form of the snakes. It's just that you need to change your perspective a little bit to actually go and see them in that way. Okay, so when it all started as 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 the photography as as a field, when it all started. It was enough to present the animals in your images in ways that audience can appreciate their beauty and hope that it will invoke interest and sense of wonder in the animals. It was, it was at that point of time, it was all right, okay. That because most people haven't hadn't seen so many, so many different animals or did not know about the biodiversity of different regions in the world. But nowadays, when uh you know, you have kind of a, kind of a book, a theater and everything combined in your phone. You scroll through Instagram and you see so many, so many different things, so many different animals, so does a portrait hold water even today? It does, but then the chances of making a an impactful portrait is very, very, very slim, believe me. And a unique portrait is even slimmer, okay. So typically, try to go wide, include a lot of habitat in the image, tell your audiences where the subject is going, the subject is living. With include, by including a lot of habitat, a lot of elements in the image you're going to, you know, you can actually emphasize upon. Okay, this is the kind of habitat you need to look for when you're going out in the field, if you're, you know, telling people to go after that subject and, you know, find it, find it and see it. Or uh you know, if you're writing a story about how you you must conserve a particular habitat, so a desert. Or a rainforest ecosystem or a dry rainforest or a rainforest, desert for whatever, whatever kind of vegetation it is. You are actually, you know, showing, depicting the whole habitat and you are giving out a message that we need to conserve this one thing. Same thing as I was saying, that times are changing and we should change our focus and styles to keep up with the changing world, okay. Uh and we ma- we must as storytellers, as photographers, we must also tell the stories of. Um you know, how we are impacting the planet, okay, now a few pictures on that. Now, if I tell you that, you know, Meghalay, so this is normally the scene that comes to your mind, a beautiful waterfall, nice green vegetation. And everything, okay, but what what people do not, people don't, this is basically just the surface of Meghalay. Once you start to scratch the surface of Meghalay, you find this. You start to find these beautiful areas where which are inhabited by really, really beautiful animals, okay. Okay, so now another another cave-like ecosystem where you have water, where you have greenery and everything, this is the last one, this is a redneck keelback. One of the most venomous snakes of India, this snake is actually both poisonous and venomous, the only species in India which is poisonous and venomous, okay. There there's a, I mean, you can read out the difference later on, what is poisonous and what is what is venomous, but this is, this is a very, very unique snake, so choice of subject, choice of background. Everything put together, this is a semi-aquatic snake, so it is, it typically prefers habitats like this, where you have a lot of rocks, you have water. Uh you have things like that, okay, so uh redneck keelback depicting in in pristine Meghalay, Meghalay habitat, okay. Another pitch, this 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 kind of, now, I can throw these visuals at my audience. So I can actually, you know, show them these these striking visuals of these animals, how beautiful they are, the colors and the kind of habitat they inhabit and then tell them. That Meghalay forest is, the forest in Meghalaya is more than seventy or eighty million years old, okay. And they are today, uh one of the most threatened forests in India. Because all those forests, all those forests, at least at least forty to fifty percent of the forest cover is going to be cleared in in a few years to make way for. For palm oil plantation, so a lot of you students, a lot of you people are going to go out as leaders. As you know, as as planners out in the world and you you are basically the future, because, because you know, students are the future of a nation. So whatever, it it doesn't really need you to, you know, pick up, pick up a camera to actually conserve the wildlife that you, that you see around. Whatever you are doing in your job, in your job, I try to be a little bit more sensitive towards nature, a little bit more eco-friendly. And that will help in the long, long run, okay, so I I showed you some really nice, uh nice, you know, animals and and scenes from. From the forest of Meghalaya, now going back two slides, this particular waterfall, uh this waterfall, this was taken a few years back. So uh now if you if you if you go ahead and see see this area, you you start, you have started to notice. Uh one or two plastic bottles here and there, some wafer packets, some cigarette butts, something like that, all, you know. Thrown around this area and this waterfall is typically sacred to the locals, because it is a difficult to get to, get to place. Not many people, you know, go there and uh you know, try to, try to, you know, keep a watch on people, because they trust you. So you as visitors should also be very sensitive to it and this kind of forest is actually threatened because of palm oil plantation. You ever, if you ever eat Nutella, you you would, I'm I'm sorry to take a brand name here, but if you ever ever eat that that kind of a peanut butter. If you go and read the constituents, uh majority is palm oil, so and that palm oil plantation is one of the largest threats, one of the, one of the most vigorous threats to the. The forest cover, uh not only in India but but the whole planet, okay. Yeah, uh now, as I was saying, that a lot of us are going to be, you know, uh going to be the future, future planners of this country and. The the country is going to come, come into your hands and you're going to plan things out. This particular, why I included this vehicle and why I included this road and why I included this waterfall and this crab. So this crab was not known to science till three years back, this is a Guban Nautiana and Guban Nator and Rihanna Longjapes. And these are called fall-based crabs, they are only known to science from four waterfalls in Amboli, which are right on the Amboli Ghart, by the side of Amboli Ghart. One road widening project, one single road widening project can wipe them, wipe them off from the face, face, face of the planet. We don't know yet if they are known from other locations also, if if basically typically they exist on other locations, so that is not known. And this frog was hidden from science all, all, all this way, you know, only three years back, somebody from Maharashtra actually. Went ahead and a team of scientists went ahead and discovered this, this crab, this image was taken before uh, you know, the the history was actually published and everything, but. This is, we used to find this, this crab, but I I I also did not know uh at, you know, before, when we started shooting this. But when I got to know that, okay, this frog is so specific to that area, I decided on making a, making an image. Where the vehicle actually in the background, it signifies the approaching civilization, okay. And the frog and and the crab is actually threatened by this, okay. Right, if you, I mean, Amboli is a very popular hill station, I'm pretty, pretty sure that many of you would be visiting the area, so. Whenever you go there, uh where where people, you know, on Amboli Ghart, where people usually take a bath on a on a waterfall. Just before it, like two hundred, three hundred meters meters before it, you'll find a series of small four, five waterfalls. You'll be very easily able to see this crab over there and typically a very, very, you know, again, a very unique species. That it is able to balance and, you know, stay on these flat rocks, these are very slippery and it stays on top of these rocks and it's a crab. Uh it is able to sustain that heavy flow of water and still feed on top of these, these rocks, okay. So very unique species and quite threatened, because we do not know, I mean, about about the species. And this also tells tells us about one more thing that I can, I can talk about this species a lot, because um this tells us one more thing. That no matter how much science describes typically, we still say that it is, it is only one, you know, one hundredth of the number of species. That we have been able to describe, okay, so whenever we are actually embarking upon a project of of on on so-called development. We we are uh threatening a lot of things which we don't even know about. So if you get into a position of planning, if you are doing that, I would like to, you know, convey this through my, through my images and I would like to tell you that, okay. Uh whenever you plan for something, keep this in mind, do a proper scientific survey, something like this, so so typically through your images. Because images are impactful and and when when combined with a little bit of words, it it makes a makes a whole lot of a difference, you can actually convey a story like this through images. Uh a pretty recent image of uh, these are abandoned nests of flamingos in the Little Runoff Catch. Now flamingos normally seen as very beautiful birds, you'll you'll see hundreds of images of these birds, uh you know, nice pink birds and from Bombay and things, you know. A lot of images keep surfacing, but uh there is, there is, there is a harsh reality part to the whole flamingo's lifestyle. Climate change is actually forcing a lot of flamingos because of these abrupt pattern changes in in water levels and water dries out or fills up too quick. All these water level and all these changes are making the flamingo abandon their nests in the long run. This phenomena used to be very rare earlier, but this is now becoming more and more frequent. In the Little Runoff Catch, we went in search of these nests and after the, after trying just a little bit, we could, we could actually find a site where uh that that would. That was abandoned this season itself and we could find, you are fortunate enough to, you know, find intact eggs over there, so, excuse me. I made this image to actually convey this message that, you know, typically and and again, as a wildlife photographer, it's not always. A nature photographer, it's not always to shoot the pretty things, you need to shoot the ugly side also. You know, that is, that is your way of, uh that can become your way of giving back to the craft, you know, or or the nature. Because nature is eventually what gives us all these images, what gives us all these visuals and vistas, so typically giving back is our responsibility. And through our images, we can do that, I try to photograph the ugly side of it too. Moving on to the last image of the presentation, uh many of you might have seen this image in form of a meme, uh in form of a. You know, this has been a very, very widely circulated image in the, in 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 popular media and social media, a print, electronic and social media. All these mediums have, you know, used this image again and again and it continues to be a very popular image amongst the netizens. Uh this is an image taken three years back in two thousand eighteen June, so these are a few pilgrims which are moving on top of the tiger. So an image which invokes a lot of different ideas in your mind. Uh the reason why this image was taken up by so many, you know, uh people and and they 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 started putting up, putting up, putting up their ideas. And stuff like that, but uh once that image becomes so popular, eventually, some or the other time that you'll, you'll, you see that most of these people will. Most of these ideas and people will actually come back to you and ask that, okay, what was the actual story of this image? The actual story of this image is this tiger was, you know, sleeping, he was, he was at a water hole nearby and he normally sleeps here during the the hot afternoon. Because this is where, you know, it is a little cold and in India, this is one, one topic that not, not many cover. This pilgrims and all these religious travelers are allowed inside tiger reserves also on foot. Because it is, it is, I mean, it might hurt the religious sentiment of of, I mean, you know, religious sentiments of any religion is very, very sensitive, so. Typically, it might hurt the sentiments of a of of a religion, so normally the Supreme Court has also also given, given them a free pass that, you know, they can walk in. But this is the kind of threat they have, the tiger that day behaved like a gentleman and did not take them, take any of them. But when when we, before they crossed this bridge, we actually went, I actually went to these people and I told them that there is a tiger sleeping underneath, so you don't cross the bridge right now. Uh they said that, you know, God will, God will take, take care of us and they walked over the bridge. So I thought this is, this is going to make a very strong statement in terms of an image where I can, you know, I can, I can show the. A single image showing conflict, harmony, all these, all these thoughts put into one image, this image you show it to anybody, he'll he'll think. He'll have a different story which he can relate to this particular, so that is how uh, you know, I would, I would like to, you know. Conclude my session over here and say that, you know, uh this is how you go about reading stories through your camera. Uh utilize this particular visual, visual arts medium to the fullest and uh just don't get, you know, fall into the trap of getting a pretty picture of an animal. But start telling stories through it and and as you grow, initially it won't come, it doesn't, it won't happen that first day you pick up a camera and you become a very good storyteller. No, that that doesn't happen, once you start shooting, you have to, everybody has to go to go to the basics, once we, once you have done that, you start shooting. But from day one, I would like to request you one, one small thing that, you know, from day one itself, you keep this in mind that, you know, you are. You're trying to tell a story instead of just a pretty picture, post on Instagram, okay, I saw a cat, I saw a duck, I saw, I saw a tiger, I saw an elephant or something like that. Related to it, try to consciously choose a particular background, try to depict the subject in a different or or a more unique way. That way you can actually develop your own very unique storytelling style, I hope I was not very boring. And I could convey the thoughts that I, that I, that I wanted to. Uh I'm really sorry, but I'm not able to, ah perfect, I'm not, I should be able to load the, I think there are some questions.
Yes, now students are those who are attending, you can ask questions, discuss. Uh so it was really, really wonderful sessions on there, nice. So I also have many. Nice, so I also have many questions, but let's uh. Chalo, there is one question already, Pooja Rathod, she is asking. Sir, what about the essence of aesthetics in wildlife photography?
The essence of aesthetics, aesthetics typically, see, it is it is a it is a very personal choice. So uh there's there's no one answer to this particular question. Uh but typically, I I am now with with my kind of a mindset, I'm not very pleased by, you know, pictures if if there are. If somebody shows me a picture of a lion yawning. I'm like, yeah, okay, land does that maybe two hundred times a day, so what's very unique about it? So aesthetics is basically, as I said, it's it's a very, it's it's very, you know, it's a very personal, personal kind of a thing. Uh but yeah, I mean, you have to follow a little bit of a some some basics, you need to have a clear background, nice background separation, the colors have to be complementary. Typically, study the color wheel a little bit, you'll have these complementary colors like blue and yellow, green and magenta, they're all opposite colors, try to combine all of them in your images. Uh the snake and the waterfall image that I showed you, so if you see there are reds and yellows, there are magentas and then there are greens and, you know. All these complementing colors in that image, so that actually, you know. Yeah, that actually, you know, makes 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 a very good, very good, very good impact as as far as aesthetics is concerned. Apart from that, as I said, I mean, it's it's very personal, but normally if you want to. Uh give it to the audiences, you try to make it as interesting as possible, try to make it as different as possible. One of the guides that guidelines that I gave you is try to make your picture look like Photoshop without using Photoshop. That is one, if you're able to do that, your your work is half done. I I I hope I was able to answer the question.
Yes, sir, thank you so much, sir.
Uh thank you, Pooja. Okay, so uh I think Mister Karthik, can I take a question from the chat box?
Yes.
Okay, so how important is print in these digital times? Very, very important. Okay, um I mean, for me even today, uh the true destination of my image is actually print. So if you want to see your your image in all its glory, you can you can, you know, you can you can see that by uh seeing it in print. Print in some, print is something that everybody, everybody should 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 aspire to have, plus it also. Excuse me. It also gives you a lot of uh, I mean, printing is very different from uh. Putting it on social media and putting it on social media and be done with it, it's it's actually putting an image on social media and. Getting everything correct is that pretty, pretty simple because all devices, all devices show different colors and. You know, all devices show will have different color levels, contrast levels, all these things, so. Uh typically, when you when you're doing it for social media and stuff, it is usually usually much easier, your your flaws are covered up. But when you're printing, you need to be perfect, so. You have to develop your craft to a point, you know, where you can actually make really good prints out of it and that is why. Uh good prints are still valued if you if you if you go ahead in the in the finite market, finite wildlife photography, uh typically prints are very, very highly valued. And because uh and and because, you know, even the digital times, you would want to have a printer in your house. I'm I'm a photographer, I keep keep making images, if you see at the background, I have an elephant image, you know. Uh put out really big, it is it is, I think, forty-four, forty-four inches or something on on the on the longer side. So you always print your work, it is still very important, even though it is getting slowly, print is, you know, becoming less and less popular, but. There always will be a niche market for print, it'll 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 never never go away completely. And printing, as I said, it is, it needs you to perfect your craft to that level. So not everybody can actually, you know, print printed images and that is why I always say that no matter how powerful a mobile device has become. Okay. You'll not be able to print the same quality that your, you know, proper camera gives you. Those those bigger pixel sites, it really matters, okay, so it's 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 going to be there, it's going to be there, so. Digital time, it is it is it is still still holds relevance for me and it is still important, very, very, very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so any more questions?
Sir, uh good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh Indrila, it was really a great session, sir. So I just, I just want to ask you one question that being a wildlife photographer, which is your personal favorite subject to. Uh money, put your cameras on and sit for hours and take that photo.
The one that that I'm gonna shoot next.
Okay, which one is it?
That you. Uh as 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 a wildlife photographer, I have to always, always, you know, keep that target ahead of me, okay? This subject is going to be my next favorite, this subject is going to be my next favorite, even though I must be detached from a subject. But there has to be a certain personal level of liking towards subject. For me, uh. If I have to choose a class of subjects that that interests me the most, I would I would I would, you know, call probably, probably the reptiles. Uh I can I can say a class, I can actually, you know, figure out a class that that is favorite to me because of their colors, because of their behavior. Very difficult to get them, hardly, India has close to, I think, more than two hundred species of snakes, but we usually get to see like three or four species in a lifetime. So a species which has that kind of a diversity and new species are added continuously every year. Uh to the to the bucket of species and that that is found in this country. Um so I I would I would I would say that snakes, lizards, all these reptiles, they are they are typically my favorite class because. Less photographed, lesser known, uh very beautiful and very enigmatic all in all.
Yes, sir, that is true, the snakes, the snakes you are talking about, you have shown two pictures of these snakes also, I'm personally very attracted to snakes, I don't know why. But I, because of their their colors or something, but you are very right that there are so many different colors. That appears in a snake's body. It it looks uh a a single color, when at different, different times, it changes its colors with the light and the reflection.
Yes, the shades, the shades are going to be very different and very varied.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much, it was really great to see all your pictures.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Um Malik Sarkar asks that, you know, how to take wildlife photography as a career option? And what are the opportunities there for a beginner like me? Okay, so. As a career option pertaining to our country, there is no fixed path. Okay, uh how to start with it is basically you just start taking pictures and once you get good enough. Opportunities and doors will automatically open, it is like any other field, okay, but in India, it is still at a very, very nascent stage. There are very few people in this country who are able to uh live just of wildlife photography, you know, without doing workshops, without doing tours, without doing anything else. We all have to manage a bucket of everything. Okay, there are different sources that we earn through, it is not one source that we earn through and which can which can usually, you know, sustain us because wildlife photography is. Uh it's probably the most expensive of all photography owners. Uh typically, your your travel costs, you have to go to all these locations, even though it's it's not really mandatory that you go to these exotic locations and shoot. Uh there are so many stories to be told from your backyard itself, but you know, as a wildlife photographer, you want to make your portfolio really, you know, wide. In terms of the subject coverage and in terms of the habitats that you have shot, so you need to travel a lot, you need to shoot a lot, shoot, shoot, shoot. I mean, there's no no uh, you know, shortcut to this, typically you have to shoot a lot and make, try to make different images. Okay, opportunity uh for a for a beginner like like you uh would be, you know, start say. Start to start to approach these magazines and these newspapers and, you know, carry carry a little bit of stories, yeah, you write to the editors, they'll not they'll not respond initially, but. Then you you know, you start you start to get get better with this. Uh one 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 friend of mine, uh my my roommate during my during my, you know, corporate job days. Uh once told me that he had to write close to five thousand mails during his B tech. Uh he was in IIT and he was from IIT Gohati, I think, during his B tech days, he had to write five thousand mails to get and get an internship in in Canada. So even in even from a biotechnology background, to get an internship, he had to write five thousand mails. Okay, so he got a paid internship and stuff later on, so and and this field is very competitive. Okay, uh people from different disciplines are coming into this, um and if you want to take it as a ca- career option. Be very good with the, you know, you have to good, you have to be a good good speaker. Because that that takes, you know, that 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 is a bit of your job because you are, most of the times you're you're going out in the people and you're spreading awareness and stuff, stuff. So you have to be a good speaker, you have to be a good writer, that gives you a brownie point in front of the editors, make images which stand out from the crowd, okay? So once these three requirements are done, when the these three requirements are, you know, of of, you know, taken care of. You'll automatically and you start start trying, start trying in a, okay, start start writing or to read newspapers and. Even even Instagram pages, give yourself a little bit of a little bit of a boost, it gives you a little bit of a boost that, okay. I'm doing something good that somebody's, somebody is actually, you know, featuring my image or something like that. Even today, if you if you visit my Instagram handle, I still thank people who are sharing my work. Uh even though most of the times I don't know who they are, but who they are, but I I still love that when when people are sharing my work, okay? Uh even after reaching the platforms that that I have I have been represented by, but still, uh even even a platform like Instagram, it is still important to me. So as a photographer, uh as a beginner or or as a seasoned photographer, you you always have to, you know, and and this is a very, very uh. A volatile kind of a field, it keeps changing, new opportunities come up, the older ways die out. Uh we used to make a lot of money from from printing and with with publishing and stuff. But now that has, that is that is slowly going down, but now we make make, you know. Uh more typically typically, talking in monetary terms, we make uh more money by selling our images. Okay, uh like that, I mean, selling our images is an open market where where our images are being used by so many different brands. For example, if you walk into any ATM and you see an elephant image over there with with written that you take a personal loan and you go to Kerala, something like that. And a wildlife photographer's picture will be used used over there, so. Such such kind of sales and I mean, you know, the world is full of images, just walk out and and uh look around you, you'll see holdings with images, you'll see. Products with images everywhere images are used, so that is the basic market that you cater to. Okay, and uh you can you can start sending this to editors and stuff, that will give you the initial initial foothold. Okay, and that will give you give you, you know, uh you you will, your work will start to start to be picked up by people, they'll they'll consciously. Start to see that, okay, you know, this this person is making some really different images, but but by the way. Uh don't show your images and this is this one very important point, don't show your images to your friends and your family and ask for their feedback. They will always, you know, no matter how 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 you tell tell them that, you know, you be brutally honest, you. Tell me what my images are and everything, your friend and family always is going to be know you, know man, you're you're the best. The image is fantastic, I've never seen something like that, believe me, they are not good critiques of your work. You might feel good initially, uh because because they are actually, you know, praising your work, but it harms you in the longer run. So get your images critiqued by a proper professional, okay? Approach any of the wildlife photographers, spend some money if you have to, but get it properly critiqued. Okay, uh a lot of a lot of photographers, I haven't started doing it yet, but a lot of photographers have this uh. You know, this paid critique sessions where you can, you know, you can you can, they they charge you per hour basis, they'll. For an hour you you hire them and they'll they'll, they'll basically online sessions, they'll. They'll see all your pictures and give you give you review about, okay, this is what you should do in your pictures to improve. This is the kind of a sto- storytelling style that you can develop in future like that, they, I mean, we get to pick up from when we see images, when we judge contests or things like that. When you see images, we get to pick up the kind of a thought process that person is having and it is good to do it in the beginning of your career because uh. You might like it, but you might not be cut out for it. Okay, uh so do a do, I mean, make a make a very conscious choice because, sorry, sorry to take up a lot of time on this, but because. Career option is a is a very serious thing in life. Okay, so when you're taking it as a career option, think through, think through it really, really well when you're doing it. I hope I was able to, you know, answer it to a to a certain level.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, and I would like to even add for Malik Selkar that. Uh we in Symbasis, we have Symbasis School of Photography, so institute itself. Uh we have under the Amridda, you know, do you, so those who are studying in that institute are. Those. Even are not there doing some other programs. You always can take help, whatever help you need in terms of critics or, you know, learning some skills in that. And apart from that, I would like to tell Malik and even other students that you can start to sharing your images. Uh. Um for bad diversity club because. Even few days back. At. Uh send. To all that. We are going to install signage of. You have your opportunity to earn money. Uh and the second part is a writing and whatever Samya has told that we also want to start our own newsletter. So that is also uh in a in a pending list since many months. So those who are interested in writing, uh you know, about biodiversity and then giving their images, you can come together as a group. And we can start and we want to start a newsletter because we are doing lots of work in campus. You yourself, if you are having your images and want to talk about it, let's start from our own biodiversity cell newsletter. So uh those who are interested, please get in touch with this, so as he has mentioned, uh writing, talking and the images. If not in one person, but as a team, if you have all those, let's come together and we can start that, yeah.
That's 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 an amazing opportunity that you're getting, actually, you should grab it, I I wish I had the same opportunity during my holidays, it would have. Uh you know, set me on the right path a long, long time ago.
Yeah, I think I think every every expert has said this one line to all the students at every Sunday. And I hope that students really grab this opportunity, my life will be completely, you know, worth of it.
Nice, but I actually grabbed this, it's a it's a great thing to have your college supporting support you so much and. Back in the day, uh coming from a technical background, I'm a mechanical engineering, I'm a mechanical engineer by education, mechanical engineering graduate, so. Uh back in the day, these alternate career career options, nobody talked about it, nowadays you're getting these sessions. You get to getting to talk to people who are actually working, working in the field and, you know. You are exposed to it so so soon, so I think if if you want to make, take it, take it up as a career option. As I said, definitely be cautious, be very serious about your career options and everything, but this is an option. Back in our days, nobody knew what a wildlife photographer is, even today, if I go and talk to people and said, tell them that, okay, I'm a wildlife photographer, they say, okay. That is your hobby, but what do you do for a living? They say, I'm a yeah, I'm a wildlife photographer, but okay, yeah, fine, you take pictures of animals, but that's hobby. How do you make it into a career? I said, yeah, I mean, I say that, yeah, it, this is also a career option, but the masses don't even know about it, that this is a career option. Okay, so uh so it's like that, okay, moving on to the next question, in most of your pictures, uh the camera is almost always on the same level as the subject. Or or lower, I can also observe that you focus on the eye of the subject. Are there any particular reasons for for these? Okay, so say you hire a portrait photographer to. Shoot you at your wedding, I'm not sure what your age is or whether you're married or not, but say you hire a photographer to shoot you at your wedding. And the photographer stands up at a podium which is fifteen feet feet higher than you shooting down at you. What will you normally get? The top of your head, will you like like the final products? No, you'll probably not not give that photographer a penny. Probably throw all the all those pictures in the dustbin or, you know, your your figurative digital bin, okay? Or if say the sub, the photographer is actually lying down on the ground while you're standing up and you're shooting. Basically, all the all all you're getting is your chin and your nostrils, okay? So typically, getting down to the eye level, getting to the eye level, it makes a personal connection with your subject, that is where you go get down to the eye level. That is one one reason, there are other reasons also, the second reason is technical. Uh when you are shooting a subject from above. Okay, the background is actually the ground below because your your shooting angle is angle is very steep, okay, so the background is very close to the subject. Now you need to maintain a certain subject to distance. Uh so uh subject to camera is to subject to background distance to get a nice separation. Okay, between a subject and the and the background, okay, and so uh when you get down to the eye level. Your background automatically is pushed back and it becomes infinity, so that is another reason why you why you want to strive to get down to the eye level of the subject in this, okay? And focusing on the eye is just incidental, I mean, I uh even though it is it is one of the most preached concepts in wildlife photography that you always focus on the eye of the subject. Unfortunately, I have not included any examples in this image where I'm uh in this particular presentation where I'm not uh. Uh you know, included images where I haven't focused on the eye or I haven't shot the face at all, shot some other part of the animal. So it is it is it is basically completely up to you and depend on the story, it's not a not a hard and fast rule to actually, you know, focus on the eye of the subject. Yeah, of course, I mean, if the subject is looking at you or something like that, if you're not looking for abstract or something, then it is the traditional rule that people followed, but. Yeah, of course, I mean, if the subject is looking at you or something like that, if you're not looking for abstract or something, then it is the traditional rule that people follow, but. As photography is also an art art form, uh all the rules rules are, you know, here meant to be broken. I hope I answered your questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh the next question is when you return from your field trip, are you fatigued by the volume of photos? Do you take a break before visiting the photos? Uh I prefer not to. I prefer not to uh forget, you know, not not to not to take a break before visiting my photos. Of course, I mean, we are, we are uh. Fatigued after after coming coming back from field, but uh most of us, most of most most of the professionals that I know of, we try to visit the photos as soon as possible. The reason being, we shoot so much that you start to forget the lighting condition that you have, okay? And your raw files and stuff are typically flat. So, you have to process it. You have to dodge and burn. Dodge and burn is darkening and brightening a certain areas in the photo. Where there was light, there was no light, like that, okay? So, dodging and burning is from the film era. This basically, this this particular term dodging and burning comes from the film era. It was it was done by Ansel Adams also, you know, seventy eighty years before me. He used to do that also, okay? And and even today I do it, everybody else does it. It's it's basically a, I mean, something which is accepted in. In photography norm that you dodge and burn and you correct the colors and stuff. So, if you are not visiting the picture soon enough, you actually forget. How the scene looked. So, it is a good idea if you are able to do it immediately. So, what we try to do is. In field after a day shoot, if I'm not shooting at night, I'll I'll sit down and process my images. Usually, and it is it is like any other entrepreneurial job, you know, you are twenty four seven you're on the job and once you are your own boss. Automatically, you have more responsibility. You don't have somebody to blame, blame it on that, okay, I did not succeed because of that person. It's always you. So, you typically, you know, you keep working, that work cycle, and once you're into the habit of it. Watching those images and you know appreciating it actually takes away the fatigue. Okay, okay.
I think uh I need want to ask question. He is from Symbasis School of Photography student.
This is how to connect with Discovery or Animal Planet, this kind of channel.
Okay, so uh it's like any other field, through, you see, if you drop them, drop them a line on Instagram. Uh usually, the people handling their social media accounts will have nothing to do with the channel itself. Okay, uh so normally, it is it is through networking skills. So, the old old, you know, old school methods of actually going and meeting people. That still holds. Find out where their office is. Go, talk to the people, talk, talk to, talk to some people, you know. There are uh in this publishing and media media industry, typically, when you start out and you don't know people, people have done weird stuff. Uh I I know, I know one one example where one assistant came up to a photographer and said that, sir, I can walk through lava for you. He said, I don't want to want you to walk through lava, but you can be my assistant and and work work under me. Okay. Something like that, you can do, you can be an assistant to somebody, but I'm not very sure that in India anybody is taking. Go have a lunch with them, chit chat a little, show them your work, that's how you get in touch, you know, you network, you you just basically network with them. It is it is the only only way normally. I mean, in the digital age hasn't changed much in that that area. I hope I I.
Okay, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Uh Pooja Rathor asked, mobile photography is prevalent nowadays, but camera lens would still be the game game changer, okay? So, no, it is always your eye. See, no matter how uh modern photography becomes, uh the camera will never point itself to. Something, or it will never decide what to keep in frame and what to keep out of it. So, no matter how much. You know. And I don't have those clip-on lenses or something like that. You you come to, come to me and you tell me that, sir, I should be designed, no, man. I can't, I can't really because I have my kit over there which I've built over over the years. So, just, I mean, whatever camera you have in hand is good. Start with whatever you have, and as you go ahead, go ahead in your field, you'll you'll start to get get an add gear, lenses and cameras and. Even mobile phones, accessories for mobile phones and stuff. You'll add add, you'll you'll keep 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 on adding it along the way. So, it's not that, you know, mobile, I mean, I'm 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 still not a very big advocate of mobile phone photography when it comes to wildlife photography. Because many a times it is not safe. Uh a lot of people do a lot of stupid stupid things with mobile phones and wildlife and they get killed in the process. So, um I I I'm still not a very big advocate of using mobile phones for wildlife photography. Other things you can definitely do. Uh social media and everything is okay. Printing, you're not going to get a very good quality. Until unless there are a few phones which give you good quality, but not not it's in general talking terms, it still doesn't give you very good printing quality, okay? And camera lens does matter, does matter. I mean, it it changes your perspective, perspective completely. Using a wide-angle lens, a macro lens, a telephoto lens, a medium telephoto lens. The perspective, your distortion, your compression, everything changes, completely changes the image, okay? So, it's it's actually pretty important, the cameras. Okay, uh Karan asked, how was your first feature struggle? And what are your tips for a budding photographer to get featured? Fortunately, my, I mean, I I never felt it, I mean, it it. It has a struggle, okay? First feature was, I think, long back in a newspaper, they had this. This column where they where they wanted the readers to send these images. And I sent one of my images over there and it was uh. Quite acclaimed by the editor. They published it and and then they sent me some money also. I was not expecting the money, but they they did, they they did it. And so, it was a, it was a, it was like, you know, kind of a, kind of a good, good feeling as a photographer, okay? And I I, I mean, as I said, a struggle is basically, if you think of it as a sap, as struggle, it'll it'll feel like struggle. It's like any other field. If somebody wants to become an actor or a dancer, if somebody wants to become a leading leading scientist, you want to become a good engineer, you still have to work hard, right? So, it's like anything else. You you just keep trying, uh keep trying. Doors will open. Uh but not, don't expect that, you know, you knock first time and the door will open. No, you might have to knock hundreds and thousands of time for the door to open for you. Uh but don't lose hope, don't be patient about it, but also be very practical about your life choices, okay? Um so, most of the wildlife photographers that you see, world around who are professionals. Uh so typically, you'll you'll see that their lifestyle is pretty trimmed down, okay? We don't, I don't get to party till three in the morning and then shoot five, five o'clock in the morning at my field station, nothing like that. So, I'll I'll sleep at eight o'clock in the night and then, you know, wake up. If if I have a, I have a shoot, I'll sleep at eight or nine. I don't get to party like my 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 peers, my my college friends, a lot of my college friends, when I, when we get in touch, I haven't met them for years and they're like, you're 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 always not there. So, uh your personal life also takes a takes a hit a little bit sometimes, but. It's not a big deal, you know. If they are good friends of yours, they'll understand that your, you know, your friends, your family will support you uh over a period of time. Uh but you know, you have to strike a balance between everything and it's it's never a struggle if you like it.
Sir, when we started your professional life in this wildlife photography, what is your, what was your primary camera that time?
Oh, when I started. As a professional, when when I started, my primary camera was a D ninety, I think. Yeah, that is when, that is when I started selling and stuff, yes. It was a D ninety, a Nikon D ninety, long back it is. At least ten eleven years. Before that, I used to shoot with film cameras and stuff. I mean, fortunately, I had a, I was from a household and a and a background. Uh where I I got to travel a lot because of my, because of the nature of my father's job. Uh and you know, we could, and we had a SLR at at our place, so I could take a lot of pictures. So, that 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 was a good thing, I mean, which worked for me.
Okay, I think uh now we can have one last question if anyone has. Otherwise, students can, you know, uh uh get connected with Somya on his Instagram. Or if Somya, you are okay, we can give your email ID also in the chat box.
Please give me my ID, it's it's, I'm I'm always always happy to answer to emails. You can, as as. Said, you can also connect with me online, no problem at all. Whenever whenever I'm I'm there, I'm I'm online, I mean. Even though, even though I might be, you know, I might not respond to your your message immediately because. Uh we are in places sometimes where you don't have network coverage. For example, from ten to fourteen, I very well know that I'm not going to have network coverage. So, if you drop, drop me a message, sooner or later, I'm going to get back to you. Don't 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 worry that I have not seen your message or I'm not replied to it. I'll definitely respond. I make sure that I respond.
Okay, thanks. So, if anyone has questioned, one last question, you can come up. Okay, I think they will uh get to you on Instagram or email. Uh Karan, uh write his email ID also uh in the chat box for students. So, Somya, uh now Karan will officially give you a word of thanks and it is really much needed word of thanks. And before that, I want to, you know, appreciate or, you know, tell all the students one thing which I observed. That you kept on saying your whole, uh you know, this session that we we photographers. You never said that I, so I really like that. So, you uh you were giving as, you know, sense of community. I never ever heard this from any photographer, I tell you. Uh so, it's always I or what I think or, you know. And since starting, you keep on, keep on saying that we as a community or we photographers. Or we should, you know, give this message. So, I really like that. So, students uh from photography school or otherwise also. Uh it is really means appreciable, right? So, Omia, you gave this message through your session and these photos. I really like this session. And the way you presented, and we would really would like to take it ahead. I always again mention uh. In every session that your first session is always a first stepping stone for this interaction. And you can suggest me and even students uh that how we can take your help for the next session. If we want to go ahead of whatever we discuss right now.
Sure, let's 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 connect on this after 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 a little bit.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, Karan, you can go ahead.
Well, yeah. Like until this meeting, I thought they are like photographers who share like stories like to their photographs. But after this meeting, like I got a different perspective that even photographers can educate, you know, their audience to their photographs. You know, the kind of content that which you have shared today with your narratives, you know, like be it that sand sand lizard. Or be it that the way of style that which you have showed for your interest in praise as well. Because generally, people like when I follow like Instagram profiles, you know, like well acclaimed photographs, they 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 glorify predators like big cats that which I have told. But I never seen like photographers who, you know, who tried to break that stereotype, you know, by by, you know, glorifying even praise as well. Because even those creators are important for our, you know, biodiversity. And this part, you know, this is my like takeaway, like I can proudly say like this is my takeaway for today's meeting, which I loved the most for the entire speech. Content. And yes, I like, thank you so much, sir, like for your, you know, priceless, you know, like ageless like memory. And this like experience that which I have shared today with your like photographs and the stories and with your work. And for me, I believe like photography, you know, like is light, like for me, because even like I'm a photographer, I'm a like a budding photographer. And I know the importance of light, like in photography. And I, you know, I wish that you take this light into the darkest places of this world. And you contribute your efforts and like whatever you are doing right now, you know, to conserve the nature and, you know, like putting forth the efforts to save. That fast vanishing wonderful creatures in this world. And like all the best for your like efforts, like going further. And we are so privileged to host yourself for the like today's meet, and I'm sure all the audience of the meet have their own values. And have their own different perspectives that we're taking home like after this meeting. And thank you so much, Shilpa Maam, for taking this initiative. And showing your constant effort by week, by conducting this, you know, this meeting weekly without any break. And thank you so much and thank you so much for this like opportunity. We are like like always like happy to host you, sir. And for like all the audience, you can reach out to our Instagram profile. We will be conducting the meetings weekly, like every Sunday. Uh you know, like anyone can join this meeting. And like that's it from our end. I hope your Sunday started for as of now with this wonderful meeting. And happy weekend, everyone. Have a good day. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Omya. Have a nice day, yeah.
It was really nice in fact. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, sir.